You've had issues. Now the audio is not going live.
No, no, you are fine.
So we were talking Thursday, the twenty fourth.
And so the selectmen, but no, but when you're saying Wednesday, the twenty third, do the selectmen meet here?
Yeah.
They do always. They don't meet in there anymore? So.
Right back to where we were.
Wednesdays are out, is that right?
Wednesdays that the selectmen meet are out.
Yeah.
So keeping with that, then it's a selectman or meeting, obviously, meeting on the twenty third? Even? Like?
What about the thirtieth? Oh, that's right.
November, so is the November sixth a selectman meeting? Or the Tuesday, the fifth?
Fifth is election day.
This, oh wait, this election day.
The November sixth I cannot do because I have a planning board meeting.
That's the, that's, okay, that's the first Thursday of the month, uh, Marguerite?
Yeah, so, so, sorry, it's the first. I do have a, I have a meeting that night every other Thursday.
So by now, November eleventh is Veterans Day. Uh, November. There's luck.
There it is.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Fourteenth is open.
Thirteenth or fourteenth, which one?
Fourteenth.
Thirteenth is not open.
But you said the four, you said the fif-
The thirteenth, I can do the fourteenth.
Thursday, the fourteenth, so that's.
November fourteenth.
Um.
Say, November fourteenth.
Thursday, okay, so that's our Thursday, Thursday. November. Fourteenth. So that being said, Carrie, I guess we still have October meeting.
Okay.
Just, it just won't involve our requests. So if we have to continue anything, another new pops up, October is still fine, we'll meet as scheduled. Um, I did, the reason why I was thinking about combining the meeting was that I didn't want to do our tour in the twenty second and then have the next week do another meeting for November, it'd be like, that'd be silly. But, um, so in that case, we, so yes, our next meeting still will be October twenty second. However, the November meeting will be the, well, that's changing.
Okay.
So Zach is our, is our regular date, which would be November twenty sixth, I guess? Is that? Is that not available for any of us?
Well, it's just, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So a lot of us could go, but I, that, we haven't even discussed that. It was more like the, the topic of that meeting will likely draw, will likely draw a lot of the butters. And because it being the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, that might be a tough day for people. So I'm just trying to avoid that.
All right. I mean, that's planned for me because I'd be out of town on the twenty sixth anyway, and I'd be on Zoom, so.
Okay. So that, that fits, okay. So the only thing on our agenda tonight is to review, discuss and act Stonegate Landing LLC, West Philly side of Somerset Ave. Map nine, status update, uh, phase one. Before we turn to Federoff and the guest that he brought, um, I do want to discuss and read into the minutes of the correspondence of Lisa Paquette, because I know this, she's here regarding a specific matter, and I figure we can just get to this first, so she's not, uh, sitting waiting for, for us, uh, to get to this item agenda. I mean, agenda, items, excuse me. So I will just read into the record, um, the first email that, uh, transpired regarding this issue, not issue, but this topic, uh, is it Wednesday, uh, September eleventh, twenty twenty four, uh, and this is from Lisa, uh, to Carrie and to Richard. Uh, saying, hi Carrie, I just want to follow up on the discussion that we had at the August twenty seventh ZBA meeting regarding the draining issue, drainage issue in my yard. On Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four, I was able to have a phone conversation with Mr. Federoff after he came to view the site. In parentheses, I was not present. In the conversation, he proposed to me that the drainage slash catch basin be installed in my yard to try to solve the flooding problem. He said he was going to consult the engineer about some details. He did not have a timeline for this, but I am assuming this needs to go before the board before any work is done. I just wanted to make the board aware that Mr. Federoff and I were able to speak, uh, and an attentive solution was proposed. Paquette, nine forty seven, Stonegate Landing. Um, and then the next email, uh, was sent November, sorry, uh, uh, September twenty third. Um, saying, is this again from Lisa to Carrie, Richard was CC. Hi Carrie, I wanted to add into the follow-up to record here. Thursday, September ninth, twenty twenty four, Mr. Federoff and Mr., I'm sorry, the last name was?
Tarnico.
Tarnico, that's right, Tarnico, appeared in my yard to assess the drainage situation. They stated that instead of a catch basin, which would be ineffective due to high pack soil and high water table, the plan is now to add a drainage ditch or swale or regrade in an effort to create surface drainage. The pine trees may be removed, and it is advised that all the shrubs from the side of my house be removed also, which will help, uh, which will help if regrading needs to be done. No timeline, uh, for this plan has been established, Lisa Paquette. Um, and then one more email which was sent. Oh, I think we have a duplicate copy of the Wednesday. Oh, it was because it was an email thread, we got that in there twice. So it looks like the Monday, the twenty third one was the most recent, uh, email regarding this. Um, Richard, if you wanted to step up and just, uh, anything you want to add to this or if anything's developed?
Yeah. So. After last one's feeding, I could go see Lisa's problems.
Yep.
And, uh, and I went out and I looked at it, and I thought. Drain manhole and fill it up with stone and try to get the water to suck again, and then if that didn't work, then pump it towards the front. Then. I called my friend, Mr. Tarnico. He's a lot better at this. Anyway, so. He came out, um, actually, uh, I made a, um. Jeff and I reunited for the benefit of the show, okay? And, uh, he's agreed now to help me get through this whole process, um, including, um, you know, clean out the basins and do what needs to be done to get it right. And, uh, couldn't ask for a better guy, and there's nobody better than Jeff. He's probably the only one in this old town who's been there from day one.
With, with this project, you mean, right? Because it dates so far back, right?
Yeah, so he's actually dug.
Okay.
So I went back and started digging for some more. I supplied, um, Western Sampson with a lot of the plans they couldn't find anywhere else.
Right.
And then I dug even more, and I got better stuff, and with Jeff's help, we can explain all the issues that came up last, pretty much all as far as the drainage system, and then we can move on to the paving, okay? But, uh, I don't have any easel. I want to.
Well, no, I guess, I guess we don't, I'm more, I'm more for right now, just concerned, I mean, we'll talk about everything else later, obviously, but for, for right now, I guess I just more what details regarding Lisa's issue.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, that, that specifically, has anything, if you have nothing to say, and there's, and there's no new updates, that's fine. I just wanted you to have the opportunity to speak if anything new has transpired about the draining on her property.
Well, she's, uh, said it right. We were over there, uh, Jeff and I both just last week.
Last week, okay, yeah.
We walked around and, uh, we pointed out to Lisa a lot of the same things that the engineers who looked at the property did, okay? Um, one of the big issues was that on the left side of the house, she had planted a series of trees, and that is smack dab in what was supposed to be a drainage swale.
Okay.
To get the water from the back to the front.
Okay.
And then Jeff explained the trees that she grew, uh, they sat off small, and they get bigger and bigger, and the bulb grows.
Okay.
And that traps the water.
Okay.
It kept it from going.
Okay.
So. You know, mother nature, and it's simple is always the best way. Um, I've done subdivision where our whole drainage system is swales, okay? And, and what's good about a swale, the water sinks in as it's going down, but it gets, it'll get to the street.
And that's what you think is gonna, and that that's what you determine is the best thing to do? Okay.
That doesn't break.
Okay.
I mean, and so, and Jeff, um, moved our starting back, um, point further back towards the trees, probably another thirty feet back.
Okay.
Because right behind the house, about thirty feet away is the orchard.
Right, right.
Steep hill.
Right, I know, yeah.
So we can get just the water, and her yard always pitches towards the back. So now we can kind of swale. And it's not gonna be all that deep, okay?
I just, we have to think about a foot out of it, so grades from the pole in the back, and like you said, the, uh, trees, the root pole grew up.
Yep.
And forces the water back into the yard. There's a little depression there, so once we get to that depression and drain it, there was a swell between both houses originally.
Okay, so.
It's filled up and backed up. It's just a drainage issue.
I guess we, we know the what, and we know the why, and we know the where. I want to know the when. Do we have like, what? I, I, if you know, I'm not saying I expect an exact answer right now, but I mean, what's, what's next in term, are we talking like?
Pretty big guy, but he told me, what do you do, Jeff?
Well, yeah, there's, um, you know, scheduling issue, which, you know, we have to finish up what we're doing. I, I didn't even realize this was.
No, I know you're kind of coming into.
Well, Jeff, we haven't done it before Thanksgiving, I would say.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll give you enough time to plan it, so.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I mean, again, I wasn't, I knew you're kind of coming into this and didn't obviously have your schedule for you to do it tomorrow. You already, already been doing stuff. I guess I was more like, if you said, no, I have no clue, but, or, but, but I'm glad we have at least some kind of Yeah. A timeline, as opposed to, I'm not sure, at least we have a tentative leap by Thanksgiving at least. So that's at least good to know that we have at least some kind of timeframe.
No, no. We are gonna, gotta fix that, okay? But, um.
Lisa, yeah, oh, thank you. So I, I guess we have, um, a little more correspondence regarding this. Uh, this was from Lisa Caldonia saying that, um, Tuesday, this is from Tuesday, September twenty fourth, saying, hi Carrie, I would need a site visit to determine if this work is within a jurisdictional, jurisdictional resource area. I can contact Mr. Federoff and the owner to set this up. Please let me know. And that's because, um, Carrie had reached out to her saying if there would be any conservation restrictions due to the, uh, trees and everything that may need, that will or may need to come down. So obviously, we, we, we don't know that yet.
I'll let Lisa come look at it, okay?
Okay.
Don't believe he's approaching any resource or whatever, I mean, I've been back there myself, but I, I just saw that. I just want to make sure he's aware.
No, and, and, and it wasn't like Lisa on her own brought up, it's more because Carrie reached out and Lisa was like, you know, I, I, I don't think she's, I don't think she's saying don't do anything, I need to have a site visit. It's more like Lisa's saying, I can't provide input unless we do a site visit. So she's not saying, nope, don't do anything, I need to do this. Like, no, it's more like she's more saying, I can't give you an answer unless we do this.
She didn't want you to go forward without that, you know, having her involved in it. Being invested, where the swell is, when you and I walked back there, it is uplifted, it is between the two property lines, um, and it was a swell, and now it's a, it's a actual home.
I mean, Mar- Marguerite, do you think, like, really, do we need to, do we need to wait and have Lisa go out, or do you think they're good to just, on their own judgment, make that call?
Well, I, it didn't appear to me that it was gonna take a long time for Lisa to go out.
No.
Oh, okay.
I thought she was gonna go out rather quick.
Can you, Richard, to set it up?
I can, I'll call Lisa, and, uh, she's come out. There's been a couple of issues within Stonegate, and
Oh, okay.
Takes care of it.
Okay.
And, uh, she tells you how to fix it.
Okay, that's good.
But she's there, and I know that you'll have no issue.
Yeah. Um, Lisa, not this Lisa, not this Lisa, this Lisa. Um, I know you, you know, you may not may or may not, you know, know so much about the whole engineering aspect of it, but does this at least sound just getting to be to a spot where we are, where you'll be content, hopefully?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. And obviously, I assume you're, you can obviously be involved with them with any kind of site visit, not site visit. I don't like saying the word site visit, that makes it sound like it's a posted meeting, but for them to come onto your property and take a look.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, a question through you to Marguerite for this, which is with, with what's being discussed back and forth, and potentially the removal of trees or shrubs, things like that as well. Do, my only concern here is I'm not hearing any discussion about who's gonna be financially responsible, and I do not want to see something coming back to us later where somebody's trying to say who is or who isn't responsible. Do we need to see any of that to know who the responsible party is going to be for everything that's going on? Including any replanting, reseeding, et cetera, Marguerite?
That's a good, great question, John.
Well, I think you can ask the developer about information, but what's your?
I didn't hear a word.
Financially, who's gonna be responsible for this?
What?
Who will be responsible for this financially?
Financially, it should be Lisa.
I mean.
I haven't done a thing wrong. Your, your own consultant has told the whole, whole world that it was self-inflicted by the plane, the trees, the structure in the backyard, and so.
Right, and I guess, I guess.
So, Mr. Federoff?
Long time ago, this issue was between me and Lisa.
No, right, okay, so.
I told her, I'll do it. I'm gonna do it. You know, um.
I, I.
Fix the drainage.
And.
Talk about the side of her house. That's a whole nother.
So, I guess.
I'm gonna get the water from the backyard out to the street. But on the left side of our house, okay, where it's all these bushes, there's a hole that big. Every time we show up, what, what is that?
Okay, no, that, that's not, Richard, that, that's fine. I guess, I, there's more want for the record to be clear that should there need to be any more discussions or debate, quote unquote, about who's responsible for it financially, I just want it very, very clear that anything would need to be taken up between the two of them, off the board's time and off the board's resources in terms of legal expenses, not, not legal expenses, in terms of like, it's not, I want it for, we're not deciding, we're not determining, we're not even really getting input on who should pay, correct? It sounds civil, if anything.
Situation.
Okay.
And I'll tell all of you, I told Lisa, I'll fix, I'll get the what water, the water from the back to the front.
Yep.
And I'm not gonna fix every other problem.
No, I know, I know, I know. Okay. All right, that sounds good. Lisa, do you have anything else you, you want to add? I know you're kind of here mostly for the, not that you can't stay, obviously, but is there anything else you want to talk about regarding this?
Just that I still don't agree that it's just the trees, that it's always been an issue since I moved in.
Right, no, I know.
The trees that need to come out, are you going to remove those, or is that my responsibility?
I, in, in, in terms of financially, or who is, or who is doing it?
Both.
Okay. So we, we know, we know about the swale. How about the removal of the trees? Is that something that you have the resources to do or no? I'm talking not financially for now, just.
Talk about the
The pine trees, are you going to remove those, or is that?
Um, I think we talked, yeah, we want to cut the branches down. Okay, so we can run the swale in the, or, and then if you want to fix them up later, that'll be the immediate set. Or if you need to trim the branches.
Okay, Greg, Greg had the comment, sorry.
When we walked the property where the so-called swell between the two properties was originally, now is an inverted up. It's not inverted down. And that's where the balls of the trees are located. So the trees must go in order to do the swell.
They stop the whole thing.
So not, so not trim back, go completely.
Trim back, they must go.
Removed, not trimmed back. You know how you said, cut the trees back?
You were saying, cut some limbs.
Not cut some limbs, it sounds like they have to go completely.
It's like.
Oh, they'll grow back.
Yeah, we need to get it inverted to run it to the street.
I can get her a price to move them. I mean, she planted them.
Right, no, I know. I mean, I'm, I'm not looking to point fingers right now.
And that's fine, I just want to make sure it's not, the fix is not going to be trimming.
Right.
Because of the way the, the parter through the land comes like this from the one above.
It'll be mad time for it to happen again.
Probably still retaining water in them, those two locations that needs to be hardened out, and either rip raft or whatever you plan on putting inside there to make that swell. That's up to you guys.
Okay. What I want to tell you, okay, we, um, we met with Lisa, um, she's got one of those arbor guys in the front.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I really don't want to, I.
Go there and like, you could cut them down or rip them out.
Okay, I, I really don't want to get, I don't want to get into too much detail about the removal, I just.
I just want to read what I'm responsible for. We talked about Lisa, about other things, but I want to be clear, I'm not responsible. Whether we can get it done easily, we might just be able to do that.
You can make it clear to the board all you want, we're not the ones you have to make it clear to. It's not, if it was an issue that we could determine, then yes, you would need to make it clear to us when we talk about it, but it's not an issue for us to talk about or decide. You can say what, you have this public meeting, you can say what you want to say, but again, any kind of issues in terms of who's responsible is not up to the board to decide, so.
And I to truly believe, when we get done with Lisa's, she's gonna be kind of write a really swell letter back.
But, Richard, Richard. Before you begin, we need to have in writing who is paying for what and how much it's going to be.
Okay, all right, I'm doing the work.
Right.
And you have to tell me what you want, you want to do.
And then you'll have to discuss that off, off meeting time. It's a, at this point, it is that I, I'm glad that we, as the board, were able to help come to a solution, but in terms of getting it done, and any discussions are unfortunately gonna have to be, uh, off of meetings and because it's a private resident. It's, you know, a, and discussions like that, whatever it, it leads to, just I don't want the board to be involved at, at that point. If we've already determined it's not something up for our jurisdiction, then I really don't want to really be involved in, in the conversations. If you need contacts for us, then we can give you contacts or resources, but in terms of like, looking for a determination or a re, you know, a ruling, that's, you know, we're kind of I think not, no longer involved at, at that point.
The water's getting out.
Okay. Okay, do we have any correspondence to read in regarding any other issue? I, I think we have one. Just regarding the seventy five, uh, uh, seven thousand five hundred. Obviously, I saw him give that to you just now. Um, I'll, I'll just read it, i- it's the record. It's not anything that really needs to be discussed, it's more, I just wanted for point of order, just to have it. Uh, so the first correspondence was the, on the seventeenth of September, uh, from Carrie to Richard regarding the, uh, fifty three G account. Good afternoon, Richard, hope you had a wonderful weekend. Just as an FYI, the fifty three G account is running low and requires a seven thousand five hundred dollar replenishment. Your immediate attention to this matter is, uh, greatly appreciated. On the eighteenth, uh, Carrie just sent another follow-up. Um, good afternoon, Richard, as to follow-up to Tuesday's request to replenish the fifty three G account. Here is the current general ledger of the account along with the twenty twenty four invoices and deposits. Any questions, concerns, please feel free to contact me. Richard sent back, um, on the twenty fourth, uh, saying that I will bring the requested seven thousand five hundred dollar replenishment check to tonight's meeting. I will also be bringing Jeff Tarnico. Jeff has agreed to work with me just, uh, to fix Stonegate. Jeff was not only the former manager of Stonegate Landing LLC, but also the president of G E R Corp, the, uh, project contractor. Jeff is a hands-on guy who was on-site every day directing his crew in sub, uh, subtract, subtractors, uh, in construction of all the project infrastructure. His input should be valuable to all, Richard. So he obviously, uh, and he did, for the record, bring in the check today to Carrie, so we do know that we have that. Um. So I guess for, for those who don't know, it obviously this was dating myself, definitely, I found out today, even, even Greg, um, that uh, so Tarnico was the one who owned the property right before you, and was that one before, before you, or were you the first one too? The, the first one, okay. So I know Greg, when you came on the board, he had, Richard had just taken it over. You were obviously aware of the whole situation, but he had ju, he had just taken over, okay? Um.
I want to show my age, Richard, but yeah.
So it's more just making it clear to, to, to everybody who, you know, the, the quote-unquote, who's who of this, now, this new, uh, information. So I guess if you have a proposal to make, you, you certainly can, or if you.
Yeah, we want to deal with some drainage questions came from the last meeting.
And we're talking now separately from her property. We're talking now separate drainage, okay? Gotcha.
Not about her.
Not, not that drainage, other drainage, okay, go ahead.
Sampson Weston, okay, identified the basins. Um, and we want to show you where they are, the situation, and how we can deal with it very easily.
Okay.
Okay, but it's much better plans than you're looking at, okay? I'm just gonna get.
Carrie, do we have it even?
We used to.
I know, I haven't seen in a while.
I'm gonna have to order another.
So I'm gonna use plans that reference in, uh, Sampson Watson's, uh, review.
Okay.
And the first is, uh, initial design, and this is the two thousand four plan.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
And this is the grading plan.
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to find the best way to. It's more like how, the, the best way to show it on the camera and for us to see and for them to explain it.
There you go.
Susan, if you want to, feel free to get up, if you want to come stand over here just for this point.
One that's got everybody's interest. This is the, uh, detention basin that was built behind the house at lot twenty nine. Eagle Terrace.
Yep.
Okay, and.
Oh, sorry.
Any other plans down, because they're blocking the view from the. No, just put those against.
Okay.
And then, and then, point, that will be great.
This is like shooting a movie.
I know, you will almost need a, a laser pointer.
The question was, that was the time initially to be a detention basin, and I'm gonna like, just enter from there.
Okay.
And then a whole bunch of stuff happened, and Jeff's gonna the pipe that comes out there doesn't go into that basin.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually four feet lower than that basin.
Okay.
And Jeff can give you the whole back.
Okay.
Well, originally, this was designed for a recharge system right here with two catch basins. And what happened was, this property, which used to be Pachico's, and then Lideo bought it, was always flooded out. So the water came off one thirty eight and it flooded all the way over the pump station. So he came in when we were trying to get this finalized, and he complained that this was gonna flood him out. But what happened, he had dug a big hole back here to trap the water. He thought he could, you know, recharge the ground himself, but it just flooded more and more.
Yep.
And then he took a six-inch pipe and ran it over the sewer pump. Sewer pump kept flooding out, so they couldn't, the pump was flooding out every time it rained, so they were having trouble with me tapping into it. So what happened was, I proposed to dig, drop this drain lower, and I captured all the water from one thirty eight, any yard, and unfortunately, this whole, we couldn't use the system because it was so much lower. I had to drop it like five feet here to catch this water in the backyard. So what happened, all the manholes dropped, everything dropped. Now, when we got out here, this recharge system obviously was up in the air, so we couldn't recharge it anymore.
Right.
So what happened, we put a big stone, uh, instead of using the recharge, we filled this full of stone. We got the outlet, and we ran it over here. Instead of going here, we're down at the swamp level under the power lines.
Mm-hmm.
So the invert was level with that, so it drained everything, and whatever backed up here went into the stone area, so this new re, that recharge system was obsolete at that point, it wasn't able to be used, so it drained the one thirty eight, it stopped the pump station whole floor and drained his yard, so everybody was happy, and and, and they actually did an ASB build on this. Uh, what we had to do was put extra sections on the manhole so we could get the invert down, so the original plan is not the original, but there was an ASB done for this, and it was done by, um, what's the engineer say?
I have an ASB.
Judith.
So when you said they dropped the manholes, what was the invert supposed to be originally at?
Well, the invert here was gonna be at, um, let's see, um, that invert right there at the catch basin was fifty seven, we went down to fifty four.
What did we do, the, the D ten pond out in the back, what was the invert on, for the elevation of that?
Ten pond dropped by five feet, so we're at, on the invert out, we're at, instead of fifty five, forty five, we're at fifty four.
So you got a good flow, yeah.
Right, a good flow, and that was about the invert elevation right here coming out, so, um, you know, all this one in, uh, this floor bay here didn't go in because we were lower in, and actually, this was already dug out because we were gonna put that infiltration system in there, which didn't, you know, was, but we filled this floor bay here all full of stone. So the water comes out here, so nobody can see it because it's kind of recharging the ground. And when it gets up to a flood level, it just.
Goes into the pond.
Right, yeah.
So when you, when you had that design, just going way back now, um, did our town engineer review all that and approve it?
Um, actually, what happened was, um, we went out there during a flooding situation in one thirty eight, and and what happened, the swale that comes in right here against this house was flooded all the way across, so I hadn't built this roadway in yet. And I showed them that I was gonna put a, um, uh, an open pipe right here. Uh, so what we did was, after we put the open pipe in there and we shot the elevations, that's what we all decided to come up with, to drop it five feet. And that's just about, you know, it, it was actually maxed his grade, it was a little lower than his grade in the corner here, and he had a pond here, so when we started digging the pond out, that's when we saw the six-inch water going straight into his invert and right across the street to the pump station.
So the, the question was, is that that was accepted by the zoning and planning board, I take it back, or whatever it was, that particular, uh, design? And then who is the one that came up with the second plan? You just said the engineer's name.
Judith.
Judith.
No, what I'm saying here is, this is, that was the two thousand four plan.
Yep.
And this is a part of the, uh, uh, the ASBIL plan done in two thousand.
Right on there? You gonna put it right on there for me?
Two thousand nine, okay. So now, this is, what, five years later now we're talking?
Yeah, keep it back there.
Yeah, yeah. When you move it closer, it will hit to the bottom of it. Okay, that's good. Yep, you're good.
So the invert pipe, that, can see what they done with the drops on the angles and stuff, but, uh, so that shows me in the back corner of the D-ten where you're going down. But I was just asking, so when you guys decided to change this plan that was originally sent in with your forty-B project, the one that's in your other hand, did our town engineer approve?
The new plan.
The new plan.
They did.
Yeah, everybody was agreeing.
Okay.
The sewer department, the town engineer, the.
I mean, I've been at the time.
More than adequate pitch in order to where you're going there. I see that. I have been on the back of that property when I went out there with, uh, the engineer and Mr. Federoff. That, uh, PC you were talking about where the swing set is sitting on is obviously never gets wet.
Right.
So it's higher than what we need, and that makes all the sense in the world, of what I'm, what I saw.
Mm-hmm.
Was that plan given to Weston and Sampson?
The planning.
Was the ASBIL plan given to Weston and Sampson?
No, they didn't have that.
Um, well, I'll tell you, um.
It's yellow, no, they didn't get it.
I gave them ten page.
Not that one.
So I found that.
That's right, okay.
I found it on a very small plan.
Yeah.
And I didn't know Staples can do this. I went over there, I gave my.
They can zoom in.
Eleven by seventeen. Boom, there it is.
Yeah, yeah.
I never knew they could do that.
They need to see that.
Because, because they had, they had, remember, when I knew if you remember, and not that, not that I'm expecting you to remember every single one that was on there, but they gave, they had a list of all the plans that they were given. They didn't say what they are missing because they didn't know what they didn't have. You know what I mean? So, but, but this, if you, but if they were not given this, this is something they definitely need to see.
Cause when they cambered underneath, going out to that back, they said it was not hooked up. You know, it makes sense now because that was one. They said all the elevations were lower than they were designed. They needed to be raised. That was two. So the, uh, sucks that now they have to look at that again to put this in perspective of what you actually have. I'm not saying it's not working, just stating that they need to see that.
So I, I know you said they weren't originally given these plans. Have they now been given them or not yet?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, that was the ten page. I gave them the full sheets.
Yeah.
Missing page seven.
Page seven.
But I also included the smaller plan that had a page seven.
Okay, I got you.
They just didn't look at.
And, and they would definitely have the same resources to be able to.
Yeah.
Increase better quality to, to view it, obviously.
But it's, but it's there.
Right, it's, 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 so, so.
Like I could never do.
So for the record, they do have it, they didn't have it originally, they do have it now.
And I will offer plan to them, okay, or send it to them.
Water was running.
I don't have it.
If they feel like they need it, I don't know if they do. They probably would, I'm sure they would reach out if for some reason they weren't able to read it, but, you know.
Is this page seven?
Should think.
That's page seven?
That's page seven.
So this, so, so, so they don't have this? Oh, they don't, they don't have page seven?
They have a little.
They don't have the big four. Okay.
They could have ran it and scanned it and put it on a log.
Which, which I'm sure they know how to do. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they would have figured out a way to, it wasn't like they were like, oh, we need the big one. You know what I mean? Like, if, if Richard was able to do this, then, uh, I'm sure, like, you know, it's, it's a resource that they definitely would also be able to do.
They have it on hand.
But at least now that, at least now they do have it, and that's definitely gonna be.
So that, you know, what you're stating is, is that plan did go to Sampson?
No, not this one. I just.
You just said page seven. Hold on, stop, stop. You said page seven.
Yes.
That's page seven.
The big form didn't get to them.
I got it, but that's page seven.
Right.
They did get it. So that's on them if they didn't look at that.
Right. Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. I should say, yes, yes.
Yeah, they did get it.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I guess that's been.
I'll let you continue. I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to go over this.
Just to clarify, the ASBIL plan of Portside Landing, and what's the other, is it Eagle Terrace?
This one over here?
Yes.
So I wanted to say, and that's, and that's the twenty-two, that's the two thousand.
Nine.
Nine-one, okay. And did they receive, I, I assume they received the two, they would have received the two, and four-one, that's the first one. I will, I assume they would have received that one. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they did.
I just wanted to make sure our engineer company at the time had reviewed.
Right, whoever, whoever it was, I mean, who was.
Far without having that looked at anyways. I just want to make sure.
Right, right, because that would have been the reason to issues. If for some reason our engineer never reviewed it and the work was done, then I can understand our new engineer being like, why and how did this happen? At least we can, we, we could have hypothetically said they didn't review it, but at least now we know that, that they did.
Yeah, they have it, so.
And, and now, and now our new engineer has the new plans, not, not new plans.
Just to make sure that that actual form is with them. Um, and, uh, I think that explains a lot of, I think, the questions. A lot of their questions was the raising of all the structures.
Right, since the answer.
They were explaining how the, the tops of the covers were underneath the asphalt because you didn't have a high enough riser, I take it, at that time. So it makes a lot of sense to me.
This is gonna, I mean, this is gonna be huge for them. I mean, this is.
Yeah, yeah, this will help them dramatically with elevation now. Yep, this is, because they already did the report. They can base it off this.
Right, obviously, it's not gonna solve anything, but at least they're gonna know why. You know what I mean? Like, that's what I mean, correct, yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, and vice chairman, it is now my job to clean out these basins.
Yeah.
Okay, get rid of all the debris.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have my engineer Silver do an ASBIL, and then, then that'll answer every question, and they'll be happy.
On the, uh, the.
I gotta clean them. That's on the agenda.
Just a dream.
Okay, and it will, it'll make it easy inspection, and I'll have my engineers do it as built as of today. And I'll have a calculation on the story.
Have, have they given any, any dates as to when they plan on being able to go out and do this? Or have, have they given you any dates or timeline as to when they'll be able to go out and start, or not yet?
I just enlisted.
Okay. No, that's fine. I, I, it's, I'm not saying I, I want.
But I, we're gonna first get that work done.
Okay.
And then I want to set him up and schedule with him a total layout of Stonegate beginning of February.
Okay.
So we can mark every basin, we can mark out the roadway.
Okay.
Back out the elevation and be ready for the spring season.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
That layout will help a lot of questions.
No, I, I, I agree, yeah. Uh, you brought a third, uh, I knew, I, I saw this more, uh, slides you haven't gotten to yet. Is it, was that just for you guys, or was there more things you wanted to address?
Um, there's definitely, everything, with all the elevations, there's no mystery. We found them, they need to be cleaned.
Okay.
You gotta do it, make them ready, get it as built, and submit it to Weston and Sampson. That's the one was, I couldn't figure out.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
That's all the one. That's why I actually, Jeff.
Gotcha, okay. Sounds like it was this smart, or moving your part to do that.
Did I hear you correctly say that you've also enlisted the assistance of Silva Engineering again?
What's that again?
You've also hired Silva Engineering.
Yeah, I, Weston, we, they asked me to make the improvements, they have my engineers submit them to plan.
Okay.
And that's, you know, and that makes sense, okay, all right. They gave initial review, which I have to tell you this very far.
So, and I guess, but that's actually a good point to know that. Like, I know originally when this, not originally, but when Richard had said he was fine using our, our, our engineer. That's for the peer review. He's not saying, um, I've now decided to get my own, this engineer is for the work.
Yeah.
It's, it's not like he's saying, I'm, I'm gonna do a different, I, I hope my own engineer now for peer review. It's more like, I'm still, he's still going with ours, but it's just for him to get the, the, the work done, obviously, okay.
Now I'll have to supply him with work from this other year.
Right, right.
Come out and inspect it.
Right. Right, okay, gotcha, okay, yep.
So you have another drawing too, correct?
Was that just more of the same, or is that another issue you wanted to bring up, or another topic?
Those are the, those are the old form plan.
How is the, the old set versus the new set?
Okay.
Yeah, these, I just brought off the whole thing.
I do have a question in regards to.
Two thousand nine ASBIL, this is, uh, it's ten pages. It's three pages of grading, okay?
Okay.
All right, and I just, that.
Can I see that one right there?
Good, which one?
The one he's got in his hand right there. That shows me his job.
While Greg's looking at that, do you have a timeframe, Richard, for when you plan to clean out the catch basins? Richard?
Do you have a plan to clean up the catch bases timeframe?
Yeah, um, where, one of the problems we have to do is in terrace, okay, a lot of them have been very tricky, so, okay. And again, it's starting tidying asphalt right now. Um, so that layout I talked about, the first thing would deal with all the, we have to know, we have to repair the base, and they gotta clean hard. And then we gotta raise all the manholes, and we gotta cut out all the basins, clean the sewer line. Springtime to try to do it.
Well, I, so I know that, that. I do. Is there a timeline to, you, you won't even be starting until the spring, or spring by the time it's all done?
Uh, I did, we, well, if I, we go to work whenever you're gonna lay it out, I could. I could clean something, I mean, I could bring, such any bases, but the truth is, uh, my reason, nothing's backing up. You know, there's no issue with water or flooding or anything, but they do need to be cleaned, that's for sure, before I turn it over.
I, I mean.
I could facilitate that as something, right, because you can do that anytime.
I mean, personally, then, I, I don't want the reason to be, well, nothing's wrong with them now, so I clean them if we don't have to. If you can clean them now, I say clean them now. I don't want there to be an issue, be like, well, now they're blocking up, so now we need to clean them. It's like, if you, if it was something you said, I literally cannot do the work until February, then you can't do the work until February. But if something that you can do now, I would suggest that we do do it now if we have the means to do it, and it's, the season is still right to do it.
So the problem with this, the only, I'm just gonna throw this back there. So as you heard in Sampson's report, that all the, uh, storm drains are beneath of the binder coat. So if he was to perform any work, he's gonna be grading, uh, he has to expose the cover, which is beneath the existing asphalt, which has to come out regardless, but I'm just stating that. Now with the, when I have speed humps, it's gonna be like dividends, and you have to tar back over them again. So what you're asking.
Wait, wait, what, catch basins, not, not the ones?
Catch basins within the road.
Within, within the, okay, with all of them, okay.
Is there any drainage that's not in the road?
Yes, there is some that he can perform.
So that, yeah, I knew that.
But I just wanna make sure. I, I don't wanna see him say, okay, you told me to do all that, and he cuts.
Good point, okay, so.
Going like this as you're driving through the, through the development.
And then having it go into winter time and have the road be, no, I, so then I guess for the record, it should be clear that.
What he can do.
A, a, any.
But you, you, the volume is working right now. We have flow as of this time. Are you guys not hundred percent?
The one at the end of the cover?
Yeah, so we're at the highest point, we're at the lowest point. Yeah, definitely flowing at this point. Have you guys gone out to that back of that yard yet? I'm not sure.
I had, uh, whether a pony is on the road?
No, on the back of the property with the D-ten pond is where they got the swing set.
Yeah.
Not hooked up.
It's flowing.
Flowing, okay, because when we walked there, I saw flow.
Yeah, I saw flow.
Yeah, I saw.
And it's.
I could see vegetation was moving. It was, it was definitely flow.
Okay.
There's one little issue with this catch basin has this little high rating. Well, what happens is, this is all settled on either side of it. That's at the right elevation. It's just a little depression here on either side of it. So if that was filled, the water would flow.
Yeah, and when you do, when you re- regrade and raise all the structures, when you grade and do your top, it would obviously pitch correctly to that, and that would take away that line that we have within that cul-de-sac.
It's, yes, it will.
I believe all the catch basins are open. The only thing, the drain manholes are the only, right.
Yeah, and I just didn't want, I wanna make that clear, because if we start opening them up now.
I agree.
If any, if there's any work that, that he can do to clean stuff out, it should be the basins that are not involving the road.
Yeah, you're talking sixteen inches, aren't we?
Yes.
Full rise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this here, we can clean out this, uh, you know, outflow area, and we can make that all flow, so there isn't any bad.
You can see where the end of the pipe was discharging, and you could see that all the growth wasn't growing over it, so we're still having flow exit.
Exactly.
I'm just trying to understand, because I believe it was supposed to be being done twice a year on the.
Yep, why the construction was being done, correct?
Exactly, and I hear your point about not wanting to create problems over the winter when things are working properly, but what?
Involve in the road anyway.
Can be cleaned now.
Storm drains.
Storm drains?
Yes, those can be cleaned.
What else? Anything else?
Catch, catch basins not along the road?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I was gonna, I would not, uh, do any of the man wells right at the moment.
Okay.
Those all, so the, the, the flow in the pipe is working. However, the meat, meat that, he was, had to drop that, so they must have raised the top of it to the street level now. Right now, the asphalt's going over all of them that are in the road.
So just the storm drains is what you would think would.
Yeah.
Can, can be done.
Yeah.
Not, not now.
Do a flow off that back corner over there, get that to move, and like, start running the hose and watch the flow come out, make sure there's no back, backing up.
Okay.
It's, because it has never been maintained.
What is that, where is that area that you're talking about, right?
That right up, uh, right in front of him, uh, what is that called?
Eagle Terrace.
Eagle Terrace, and then up at the top of the street, we call that, what is that, what, name of that road, that one-way you got?
Uh, so, uh, so, abo- above your left hand, above your left hand?
Yeah, what do they call that?
I think that's just Stonegate Landing.
Okay, it's not, it's not separate. Oh, oh, yeah, I guess.
One thirty-eight.
Yep.
And, and, and so he could do a power flow there, and then as long as there's flow coming out at the other end, you know, we can test it that way.
Okay.
There is a couple more drain, uh, outside edges he could do too.
This drainage swale here, uh, connects with this driveway. You see one thirty-eight kinda sheds into it, so this needs to be cleaned out there.
Sure.
To my flat end right there.
I remember that, yeah, it's flooding all the time. It used to go right across the half the street of one thirty-eight.
Exactly.
That can happen now?
No.
That one can't happen now.
It's flowing good right now, but it needs to be cleaned up.
Does need to be, yes.
That should wait until the spring.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to understand is, what can be done by, if we have them come back in November, what could be done between now and the next meeting?
Access.
Show some maintenance on the system.
Right.
We can look at all the inverts here, uh, the outflows, and clean those up, so there isn't any backing up. And, uh, so those can all be cleaned up, and we can just make sure that flow is going right out to the, under the power lines. And, uh, the catch basins, if they're, if they have any debris in it, maybe get a catch basin company and clean them out.
Yeah, not, not all the covers are upgraded, that's.
Uh, the, all the catch basins are set at by the grant.
Yeah, that's right, we can.
And they all have hoods on them, so the only thing, we'll have to get a, a truck to go in there and.
We've had them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm glad at least this, this work that can be done.
It's the, it's the.
Yeah.
Manhole.
No, I, I agree. That should not be touched. That's only gonna, it's only gonna make the road worse before the winter, so let's not do that one.
I have storm drains, I have.
Catch basins.
Not involving the road.
So storm drains, clean of debris, catch basins can be cleaned of debris. Look at all the outflows, and then do a power flow on the corner of Eagle Terrace and the one-way area on Stonegate Landing.
Yeah, so if he, if he reformed it up at, uh, one thirty-eight, and he starts seeing the flow come through, it shows there's no blockage going out.
Yeah, so I think, yes, and now Marty just has to put the record, what, what can be done between now and at least in November, if they can't.
Sure.
You know, if, at least by the November meeting, because by then, the weather's gonna be done, so. Uh, was there any other issues?
Those four things could be done for November. I think, again, I, this goes back to my point, Richard, around goodwill. I hear what you're saying. It's very helpful to hear that you've got Jeff involved, you've got Silva Engineering involved, but this board has had you coming before them to your credit for over a year now, and we need to start seeing some work done, so.
And now we have the means to do it, it sounds like.
Say, it's a matter of showing some goodwill and not just waiting again for another winter. So whatever can be done, and as the others see that things are being done, and there's some maintenance, it's gonna help them believe in you. You have a lot of other things that you need to do about building goodwill with that, that development anyways, for reasons that are beyond the board's jurisdiction. So I just think of things that can be done to show there's work and there's people involved, and, you know, Jeff, it's nice to see you again. And have you back involved in, with this, this background, because I think, frankly, you and I are probably the ones who have that background.
Well, you were, you were here for me.
I was here, I was here with Pat Kelly, so.
Oh, my God.
Um, so, you know, I think that's just where I'm at right now, to whatever can be done to show some goodwill, show that there's work going out there, to perhaps to come in and say, by the next meeting, this is what we can do, to have a fair, the board is not gonna ask you to do things that don't make sense, but they're going to ask you to do some things for the goodwill.
That makes complete sense.
We also gotta talk, um, the original one, we, I know you said you were gonna talk about, uh, homeowners association in regards to the sidewalks.
That's all, yeah, down the road.
Is that something too?
Right.
So let's keep in mind that, uh, they're not in, and, uh, there's, I've seen those ADA things, all, all crosswalk areas, angles. Um, you had said that you're not sure if the homeowners association wants them or not, because there is some fences that are now on, which they, they thought was land, which, because the sidewalks were never put in, it's actually on.
I have an idea about that.
Well, let's, let me finish. So we need to make sure that whoever, I don't thi- is that a major change to the current permit? If we were to tell them he could not do the sidewalks due to ADA?
Where did we leave off the last meeting? I know that was some.
I know you said that the sidewalks were something that maybe looked at down the road for an evaluation.
Right.
And that Weston and Sampson was going, we had, we were gonna ask Weston and Sampson to take a look at it and speak through Richard and Jeff around what, what it looks like, what does it look like out there right now and what could be built and what might not be able to be built based on what was proposed.
And then that would determine if it needed to come before, before a request. Well, if it wasn't, if it was a major change or not, and then we would have to have a hearing for, uh, making a determination on that. So.
Was that trees and, or was it light posts?
It was, I think it's involving, I think that, well, that was all in, kind of in the same conversation, I think.
I just don't want to see him do the infrastructure without talking about that.
No.
Before he performs the infrastructure.
Um, the only other thing, I know it's a little bit off topic, but I, I know I have, obviously you would have sensed it if we, if we got it, but we, did we officially reach out to the fire and police about, how we have a, you know, new chief for police and we wanted an update on the putting a gate to block the road, how, how we.
I thought that's what Richard was gonna be doing.
Yeah. I know. Obviously we haven't seen any correspondence. I feel that we would if, if there wasn't any, um.
You asked me to reach out to the fire.
Could we, fire department and we have a new, and, and, and police, because we have a new, we have a new police chief, right? We had, we had correspondence from our former police chief, but I had, we had requested or suggested that we get newer correspondence with the new police chief. Uh, 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 what, I want.
I refer it to you.
Well, the reason why we were asking is because you were talking about putting a gate.
Oh, I do.
All right. Let me stop right there. So now when you have a gate, you're stopping apparatus from entering and you're gonna want a keypad.
We had.
And I talked to you about doing a keypad for anyone that's within the building.
Residents had concerns about that. I did too. And we said, let's see what they, they say.
That's why we asked you to talk to the police chief. We wanted his input on regards to your.
And fire too. Even though, even though we have the same, that's the same chief has been involved for a while, uh, we haven't really had official word from him as to what they felt like was best. Um, i- i- it's okay if you don't, you know, it's not, it's not the, the big, obviously we're not looking to make an issue on that right now, or, you know, get an answer right now. I was just adding curiosity, wondering if there was anything, any updates on that, because I think I would like to see that, not a solution, but at least correspondence by November at least.
At the last, uh, meeting, Mr. Loeb, you asked me to research some lifts and the gates.
Yep.
I did it.
Okay.
Wow.
I only, I didn't have time to put it. I have one for everyone.
Certainly to look at, but I, I don't, I, 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 if we had a hundred great options, that's fine. I'm waiting to see what the, what the police and fire chief say is best, but at least we have this though.
I can, I can, I can put this in my detail of police.
Okay.
How it works.
Okay. That's not a bad idea.
And it's, it's solar powered with backup. Just has to be in a sunny spot and it can be mobily operated and I can order twenty-four.
Right.
Okay. So they'd have access all the time.
And, and, and I guess the thing is, you know, depending on their response, we would go from there. If, if they say, I don't care what kind of gate it is, I don't want a gate, then we don't do a gate and we, and we talk about it again, but.
But we, we have info.
But at least now we have, you know, so we can certainly, um, Richard, can you please, if you can, uh, email this either to Marguerite, I'm not, sorry, uh, to Carrie and, and she can forward this to the fire and police chief or if.
Richard's gonna be the one following up with fire and police.
Okay. So I then, I, I would say, I would say we, it's great that we have it, but then I would say if you can send this to them and then.
I need one back.
There you go. I, let's, let's see.
There's a lot of trouble.
So, yeah, research, I would just, I'm not, I don't want, want to tell you how, how to word the email, but I would just say, reach out to them, saying, you know, the, the board's obviously been discussing, uh, I.
The concern with the one-way traffic.
I'm certainly fine, I'm certainly fine with you saying, I think, quote unquote, Richard saying, I would be fine with the gate, but I don't want any, I don't want the fire police chief to come away from the conversation thinking, we've determined this is what we want. It's more like, this is, this is a potential solution to that problem. I don't want to be, we're putting a gate up, what do you got? This is gonna be it. It's more like we may, we, we're, we're talking about it. One, do you think a gate is best? Two, if so, maybe this one, and then, and then go from there. I, I still want them to walk away from the conversation thinking we've wanted, we want the gate.
Right.
I'm not saying I do or don't want it. I'm just saying, especially for the residents who have a big concern about it, quite frankly, I do too. I don't want them, I don't want it out there thinking that we've already determined we're going with, with the gate. So for the record, we don't have, this is not a formal proposal. This is just strictly just a printout of one of the options that Richard found for us to take a look at. I don't want to say consider because it's not a decision, but.
It's a, it's a resolution to the driving in and out.
Right. Now, for all I know, the fire person will, will say, fine, I have no problem, we can get to that gate. But like when the resident said, even before I, I said it, no matter how good the gate is, if, if they think it's gonna take three extra seconds for their fire chief, life when it comes to fire and stuff, seconds matter. So e- even if it's like, oh, well, this is a great gate, if the fire police say, no, don't put a gate, we're gonna, we will eventually have to think about something else, whatever that will be, we'll, we'll have to cross the bridge and come to it, but.
Yeah, let's just think positive, see what they say.
Right.
I did, yeah. I drove around my car with the pedometer and cause, you know, I drove from the fire station to the entrance on Sinister and the one on one thirty-eight up to the cul-de-sac there.
Yep.
And the distance to Sinister is one point nine miles and the other side is two miles.
So you're saying, well, it also.
One step closer. Okay. And if they turn on Sinister, they gotta wipe.
Right. But like, God forbid, let's say National Grid's out there doing tree work on the, on, on the closest entrance and they get there, they're like, well, now I can't go through this way. You know what I mean? We have to, we have to assume silly things like that because you never know.
He'd open it, you know?
Right. But what I'm saying is, I know you felt like, well, the, the other engines would be closer for them, but I mean, if, if the house, you know, I didn't want to start going down the, what, every possible thing that could happen, but, um, all right. But at least we have a, a, a closer reach, uh, closer. So yeah, if you could reach out to them, hopefully we can hear, hopefully we hear back from them by the, um, November meeting. And I would say any correspondence you do with the fire and police chief regarding this matter, I know Carrie's not gonna be the one reaching out, but he should probably CC you on them, Carrie, just to at least, e- even if we're not getting answers back, at, at least, at least you're not waiting for him or them to reach out to you. At least you're seeing it. Uh, I don't want you to feel the need that you have to, hey, when you hear back from you guys, I just want you to be able to have visibility on it. Okay. All right. Were there any other, uh, issues that you guys want to bring up tonight regarding anything?
Just, I, you talked about, um, the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Potential that, uh, school bus turn around.
Right, right. Yep, yep.
And I was just wondering if I requested a modification that eliminated that, advertise it and have everyone come to the meeting and tell you what they think. And whatever they decide, I'm good with.
Now, uh, that's, no, that's a good point. I mean, especially with, if it is a request to remove that, it would have to go on a posted meeting. So that's how they would see it. But my question is that next, where does, where, maybe you have more input on this? Where does a school come into play in terms of, like, let's say, let's say we're not doing a turnaround and, but then it's like, well, then the bus is not gonna turn around down there. So then is that gonna involve the kids walking and can they even do that nowadays? So what do you feel like?
My honest opinion on this, but this is my opinion.
Yeah.
The bus goes in there now and it's not even a legal public road.
Right, well, right. Exactly.
Where the bus turnaround was coming into play.
And should they even be going down there right now?
So now you, the bus goes in, goes to that last cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Turns around on that location and comes back up.
Yeah.
It is able to make the loop.
Um, so a turner's not even needed. It, 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 it can do it without it. It's.
It was also because of talking about phase two.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, the one thing I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm not saying, I'm only one person. I, I don't know if we can eliminate sidewalks with the ADA requirements. I'm not sure how that works.
John, can you speak on that?
Don't want to say that that's gonna be an easy just pull out of there. And I do know your, what you have going on with people putting fences where they actually where the sidewalk was supposed to.
They're in the.
Yeah, I, I don't want to.
And I, but I, I don't know if we can say ADA is not.
Yeah. So, so take.
I just want to be cautious.
So yeah, taking out the whole factor of, is there going to need to go before the board to, you know, what kind of modification is gonna be? Not, let's not even talk about that.
Yeah.
It's more like, John, do you know anything about that?
You're muted.
John? That iPhone that's there, that is him, right? Okay. Well, I mean.
Question on this is that we had talked about there being a modification request that like they would be needed once you got going with the work and you had the engineers, Silva engineer did their work and they were able to be peer reviewed by Weston and Sampson. And that you just need a comprehensive modification request. It would include, we, the board would expect it to include sidewalks. The board would expect it to include the bus turnaround. And maybe something else, once they finished the rest of their work that they're looking at. And that you would agree, you would not challenge that it was considered a major modification.
Yeah.
And you would advertise it and let the neighborhood and anyone else come in and provide their input on it. But I still think that's a good idea. I think that it's something that still is gonna take a little bit of review.
Definitely, yeah.
Engineers to really understand what you're looking for, because the modification request for the comprehensive permit rules that this board operates on under will require you to come in with an actual proposal. You can't just say, I mean, it might be that I want to eliminate it. That might be a proposal, eliminate that condition. But for the sidewalks, maybe it's not a complete elimination and maybe putting some on the other side of the road, maybe just portions of the sidewalks going away, but not other areas, you know, being able to construct them in another.
So that's why I was reaching out to John, because I didn't, if I didn't want, was it maybe John went over?
That might be.
I really, I want to reach out to John because i- if, if John says, I know for a fact right now they have to be there, then at least you know, don't put in requests to remove them because we can't.
You can't.
You know what I mean?
Where those conditions are, they've got sidewalks on all, all sides.
This side, yeah.
Yeah. So we might end up maybe bringing it across.
Right. Which, right. I guess, I guess, I guess.
In, in, uh.
This is all hypothetical, but.
People's defense. It's been a long time with this development. So now I'm cutting the grass in front of my house. I'm putting the fence up, but near the close to the road, it happens.
No, I get, I get it.
You know, and it's in a lot of locations here. There's actually driveways that are brought out into the street.
Mm-hmm.
Like pumped into the road. So those are all gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah. And, and I, I would, I didn't forget what Margaret said about like that, that may need to be a full, oh, okay. Well, let's put my comment on hold until we get from back to John. John, can you hear us?
Give it one second. Sometimes it takes.
Okay, okay. John? Okay. Well, until we hear from him, I know, I said, I didn't, I didn't forget that, you know, all these things regarding the sidewalk and the trees. Uh, would, right, would need to be the, would be, would most likely need to go in terms of.
I just want him to come in one time at a roll.
No, I, I agree. And obviously I, I wasn't saying, do you have an answer? I wasn't like saying, let's talk about that now. I just didn't know if any new information has come up about it, but I guess not. And that, that's, that's fine, obviously. Um.
And if we were to move it from one side to the other, that might be a bigger problem. I just.
Right. Yeah. I mean, let's, yeah, but.
Because they got, you know, whatever size they're on.
Right. It's, right. It's almost like, yeah.
Yeah. Like, like one person had to, one thing.
Uh, exactly. No, I know you're right. Uh, was there anything else?
You know, it's just a lot of sidewalks, take part for, there's only three.
No, I, that's.
Not a huge amount of money.
No, I know.
There is, there is crosswalks. There is all kinds of striping, showing crosswalks on that.
Right.
You know, stuff like that. So.
And I, I do know what you're saying, because you'll, you'll say, okay, we'll, we'll jump into the right. Then you have the ones on the right side, but now I can't do it. But the ones on the left, so like it's gonna, I know like there might not be one easy solution. And that's fine. Obviously I don't want to keep going into too much detail about it, considering it might, it's gonna need to come before us as a request anyway, if you guys choose to do that. But I was just, just looking to see if any new information came about it. Um, so I guess aside from the work.
So this is what I can share. I'm, I had a meeting with Weston and Sampson since the last meeting and I spoke to them about what happened at the board meeting.
Exactly. Hi, John. You're back.
Yeah. I don't know what was going on. I really apologize for all of that.
No, that's fine.
I, I could hear everything. So let me just address the ADA side of it. There's two different things here. One is that with the school department, their policy, especially for the elementary kids, is door to door. So regardless of anything and what the residents want, we may be, uh, you know, trumped by the school policy and what their requirements are. And I think we need to get a readout on that. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet they will not.
Not what?
Agree to, you know, an entrance at the end of the, of, of, of the roadway. Or, or stop at the end of the roadway. But I think that we would need to contact the superintendent's office to get a read on that. The second part of it is with regard to the ADA component for the sidewalks.
Yes.
And for, and for the down ramps. We are probably going to be required still to maintain the standard that we would have to maintain today, because the project wasn't finished and because the ADA regulations have changed since two thousand and ten to mirror a federal code for that. So most likely the only way we would be able to potentially not have the, have the, the, the down ramps, the rail pads, et cetera, and the sidewalks at thirty, thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
Would potentially be to ask the, the state's architectural access board for a variance. And the only way we're gonna get the variance potentially is to show that there are, there's already a hindrance. For example, light posts that can't be removed that we're discussing last time, trees, things like that. So.
Okay.
That's the answer to both. We need outside consulting in both accounts.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's definitely, I definitely agree. And I think that's, that's, sounds logical to me too. Um, so Margaret, what you were saying about the, about the meeting you had.
So I had a meeting with Weston and Sampson, um, sent after the last meeting and explained what had happened at the board's meeting and where, how the board as we, as we understood, was looking to go forward in a, in a collaborative way with Richard and use Weston and Sampson to do, you know, peer, ongoing peer review of this work. They put together a further proposal, which was forwarded to Richard.
Yes, I agree with it.
And then I don't know if you've agreed to that proposal yet.
I have. And, um, they, they go into detail, you know, the only issue I saw there is that the, the civil, what is, what's that calculation first out on the base. Okay.
Oh, the, um, the binder. They wanted to.
Okay, yep.
Okay. And, and they took analysis below and, um, they don't meet twenty twenty-four standards, but I feel they very much meet oh four.
Which is, which is what you're operating on. You're right. Yeah.
And it's here. I can read it here.
Yeah, they were all cordoned tested right after we paved the binder.
Yeah.
Well, this is on his report. This is the, uh, asphalt thickness throughout the project. And, um, the plan required an inch and a half of base and an inch and a half of top.
Yep.
And that most of, uh, most of the pavement down exceeds one and a half.
Okay.
Uh, all but one dilatation is just a small area. They found only one edge, but it, but on all the other ones, uh, it was two inches, one was three inches. And, you know, when a pavement goes through, maybe it gets thin in a little spot, you need, so they're telling me that the thickness is good. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, but they don't want me to do any more, any, before paving, I have to repair all the cracks and all that. What's that?
I thought it said remove binder.
I thought it said two.
Yeah. I want to say his report said remove.
But unless, unless the new ones are something, unless the new ones are something.
Found that nowhere is there.
Unless the new ones are something different.
Because you have the, what they sent us said that last week.
Yeah, um.
That's why, uh,
Um.
It said somewhere in there, uh, binder must be.
I'll, I'll look too. I didn't see that.
I almost thought.
I, I have it in the truck. Cause I was misleading you too, because I was reading the report. And then when I went to the second page, Margaret brought it up, said, said something to me.
I've had it. I've been looking at it because I want to do her coming. And, you know, this is, uh.
Thank you. Numerous areas of pavement distressed were observed during the visual assessment. Therefore, paving over the existing pavement is not recommended.
But what does it say?
But it doesn't say remove.
Right. Yeah. Well, I guess that's what he's.
Numerous areas of pavements distressed. So now with most of the pavement, uh, they have observed subsurface disclaws non-consistent with design drawing, which that makes sense.
Right.
Uh, since the surface course has not been placed, geotechnological laboratory data indicates existing subbase materials contained between twenty to thirty percent fines.
Yep.
Mass DOT standards of today, which we were in two thousand.
That's, that's fine. Yep.
Never been, yeah.
Yep.
Ten percent.
Right. But I get.
I don't know what two thousand, what was it for?
Yes.
So we, we have to see what the, that states. But it does say right there.
It was.
Not that. So I was telling you, I was looking at it earlier too, because I thought maybe it was. But as this evaluation came in, it says not recommended.
But I guess, but what, what does it say to remove it?
Areas of pavement.
Well, read the whole thing, because right here it says, based on the extent of defects, we do not recommend that additional pavement be placed over the existing material without prior repairs.
Right.
Okay, impacted area. And that refers to all the sketches and pictures he took.
Yeah, with the allegation going through.
Right. But, but what does it say about the binder coat? What does it say that they say, remove the binder coat?
Right, yeah. They have paving over the existing, that's binder.
Oh, that's remote pass. Okay.
Okay.
Can I look at that?
Yeah, it's just, it, it, so this is just the power, this is the same information.
Not saying that.
This is just, this is just the PowerPoint slides from that presentation. It's the same information. It's just in the, in front of, from the PowerPoint slides. So this shouldn't, this is any, this is any new or different, different material than what you saw. Th- this is just a printout from the PowerPoint slides.
Okay. So.
Just so you know.
My reading was that we gotta fix the base. It's compact. It's really good. And then we're gonna lay over and we might want to do more than an inch and a half.
And reaching out.
I think that would probably be us.
I, I don't see any, anything wrong with, with reaching out to them for clarification, because it's, I mean, I, I definitely understand why Richard was on a different page, because I can, it's not. If you want.
Little shoe layer stuff.
Want more.
Self-explanatory.
Yeah, but, but that, that's definitely more something that should, he should get clarified and not, no, no fault on his own, but if, if he wants, I think he probably should get clarification onto what exactly they meant. Yeah, but but that's definitely more something that should he should get clarified. And not to no fault of his own, but if you want, I think you probably should get clarification onto what exactly they meant. That's that's obviously fine.
But these are all answered by.
My experience caught with engineers, they would say.
Right, 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 right. That's why. Right, right, because the wording wasn't rip it out, but the wording wasn't, they said, don't pave over it, but they didn't say rip it out either. So you're like, well, then, right.
So where are we with that?
We don't know. Right, but at least it's fine. It's fine to not know. It makes sense why we don't know, but he should probably reach out to get clarification from them. So Marguerite, will we add that to what?
Well, so my understanding was that once Richard signed off on this. Next. Would you sign the recent, they had a part two?
I noticed I I thought that I see that the estimated amount of money went out. Is there any backup to that?
This is the next phase of what they were doing. So they gave you an estimate for the work that they already did. That was that resulted in this report. And now to stay involved, this was what they were submitting. This.
And that's.
Another forty seven thousand.
To stay involved on a peer review basis.
What are they gonna do to that? But I better read it.
Yes. So then at that point in time, once this gets resolved, then they'll be you'll be able to reach out to them.
Okay. Okay.
On an ongoing basis.
Because their initial goal is thirty seven thousand. Was doubling.
Well, this this is part B, though. This is phase B. So what they were doing was establishing what the issues were.
Okay.
It was confusing because they called it phase B, but it's not about phase B of the project.
Oh, okay, okay. I was like, wait, what? Okay, okay.
Right, so they were, part A was to establish the issues and do the analysis.
And that was done, correct.
And now you ask them to stay involved, and the town wants them to do a peer review. And obviously, there's some engineering work that you're going to have done.
Absolutely.
But they were going to stay involved in a little bit more. They were going to be a little bit more actively involved. Because you had wanted them to. Otherwise, they can we can strictly have you hire your engineers and they can peer review all.
Well, I think with the way we started, okay, I have to get the engineer to do this. He can do the plans. Why have them do it?
They're not doing they're not doing the.
What's that?
They're gonna peer review the.
Peer review engineer, not the ones doing the work.
The voting reviewed the existing plans.
Well, but they didn't have all of them. This is the problem.
And now.
I'm still looking for plans.
And now they do. It's not we're not not I'm not saying they have all of them now, but at least they have more.
Well, there's.
It's your responsibility to get it.
There's an issue. There's an issue about the. But there's an issue about the access off of, we haven't even talked about that yet, the access off of nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing. And that house that's there that has an access off of a one-way road, that's still something that we need to figure out a solution to.
Well, I'm gonna give a notice to make it. She has no right to use the road. I'm not gonna play games.
Okay, well.
I'm gonna I'm gonna put those two big bullets right there and say, you have no right to this. I have to shut it down or she'll get it back. What's that? When you if you don't do it for twenty years. Okay, she, that permission never been interest. They connected into my sewer, the sewer department, my water line, and they used a the a a one-way in, I guess it's free. Okay, because that they got front into my road. And they issued a permit and they built the house. So it's time to call state space.
Okay, I mean, there's some confusing information. We've been doing some research on that on our end since the meeting as well.
I can spy if you want. I sent it.
You might want to talk to Jeff.
No, no.
Because he was involved in in the meeting minutes that existed then.
Five years ago, I sent a whole package to the board's slide detailing all the malfeasance going on. And they never talked to me about it. And all I heard was the is they know they heard about an executive session. The only note they had was possible litigation. They never tried to correct it. They didn't deny it. They didn't want anything. So it's time for me to bring that up again. And I'm going to. I'll supply the board with the same information.
Right, well, again, that has to be addressed, and that's something that Weston Sampson has been asked to to review. And that's why they still have some existing plans and information that they're looking for as well. So there is some additional plan work. Perhaps we might be able to assist them in that. That will ultimately make the cost that they were envisioning less, because when they talked to me, I didn't realize Jeff was involved. And they were thinking that one of two things was gonna happen. I was gonna spend hours searching my files for old plans, and I don't have everything, or they were going to start doing some research at the registry of deeds. And that's where they were at. So it's perhaps that may not be as extensive now with your involvement.
Well, since he's been involved, we already have a plan that they didn't have before. And that you still, you know, him coming on already is giving them more information.
You gotta take a look at this, Richard, and for that to continue, they they need you to sign off on the next piece.
I I quickly looked at it. I said, oh, they went up ten grand. I didn't know. I said, well, that doesn't seem too bad. They'll be looking at everything else coming in. But, yeah, we maybe want to, they'd give it as a great start. They identified property. They already told me how to fix it. So I'll have my guys fix it and then.
They need to peer review that.
Yeah.
The information that you talked about with having your engineer do a full plan on Stonegate Landing, Stonegate Estate Stormwater, an asphalt survey for the entire Stonegate Estate Stormwater System for approval by the plan. Then they are saying that needs to be done, and then they will peer review that. That's part of what this work is.
Okay.
Okay, that's what this is.
That's peer review only?
This is, for the most part, peer review only. I think they were, they'll probably be very pleased to know that you have civil engineering involved. As of the last meeting, you didn't. So now you do. You can let them know that. You can ask them if there's any as a result of getting plans. I mean, you can call them on this, but this needs to be signed and negotiated so that you can keep the work going and keep moving forward. And I need to take a look at the sidewalk thing.
Right, right.
I understand. I'm trying to share with you where where this.
You might ask me what to get started. And you know, with all the delays we have, Marguerite, with all due respect, we engaged Weston Sampson back in last February. And I gave my first fifteen thousand dollar check in mind. It's taken seven months to get to this point.
No, because they did report. And this was sent to you on September fifth.
Yeah. But we started this process back in February.
We had a meeting on August twenty seventh. I spoke to them within three or four days, and they sent you this proposal on September fifth. They had a report to you, Richard. We're trying to move this forward as much as we can.
Too, but it is to Richard's.
Okay, but now we've got to have you review this and get to that.
And and there, to me, they want me, and I got instructed by them to clear the daisons and then have my engineer to do an asphalt and weigh in whether it's net is still meet. That's why I brought silver.
Great.
So I'm doing it.
No, and that's good. But in the meantime, you've still got to get them on board to do a peer review.
Yeah, I have to sit down. I'm gonna call them. Is it okay if I call them, Richard?
You can, except that Mr. Bearden is won't be back till next week. He's on vacation.
Okay.
So you'll have to stay till next week.
And I'm going on a ninety day cruise.
Marguerite, was there any more information brought up during that meeting you had with them? Since since our meeting that you want to talk about?
So I shared with them the concern we had around nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing and the information that Carrie had shared with me from her review of the building permit. I had some follow up questions and some follow up information that I asked Carrie to get, and she did share that with me as well. I mean, I think it's still a little unclear. I I've seen in the history of nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing, I've seen two different plans. I'm not positive which one was ultimately approved and filed. But there was one that had access off of Stonegate Landing, and there's one that had access off of Somerset Avenue. And I'm not positive which way the ultimate. I know what they're actually doing on the ground, but I'm not sure what was ultimately approved.
Right, okay.
And it appears that there was an easement. It's noted on the plan. It's noted in the planning board records. It's noted in meetings before this board that there was an easement or permission given to them by Stonegate Landing at the time to use, at least to use it as an access way. I don't know if there was a recorded easement. I don't know if there was legal legal language in their deed, and they actually were deeded the property through the permission of the A and R plan. I I haven't done gone any further in that research. Perhaps, though, with Jeff involved, because you were there back then, Jeff, and your name is coming up in this research, you might have some records as well that you can look into.
Yes, well, it was it was definitely off of one thirty eight, and there was a construction easement off of Stonegate Landing. That was it. And I know there was some stuff done by the owner with Joe Lawrence, and next thing you know, they were in the road digging it up. But there originally that was approved to come off of one thirty eight.
I'll share everything I have that I sent to the town five years ago. And you can look at it. Speaks for itself.
Okay, is there anything else? I think that's pretty much that that's that's I think we've touched on all of them that made, you know, the things that we were.
So I'm going back to this.
Oh, so I'm sorry, Carrie.
List of what's gonna be discussed at the next meeting?
Yes.
So, Richard, you're gonna be sharing any information you have on nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing.
And this is by the October meeting, Marguerite, or you you can't come to the October meeting? So happy November, right?
Richard, you're going to address, you're gonna reach out to Weston Sampson and sign whatever. If they revise it, they revise it, but that's up to them. Otherwise, you're gonna sign this. You're going to be contacting the fire department, the police chief to explain that you're considering a proposal, but the board has it before them, but they are not agreeing to it for a lift gate and provide the information that you submitted to the board and that the board is seeking their input because of all the safety concerns around that.
Yep.
For November, there's gonna be some work done around maintenance of the stormwater system, so cleaning the storm drains, power flow to Eagle Terrace in the one-way area on Stonegate Landing, looking at all outflows and cleaning those up so there's no backup, and cleaning all catch basins of degree.
Just from my point of information, so I I not 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 regarding what date the work, we want to see the work done by. If there's more discussion that he's gonna come with the next meeting, our next meeting is in October, but you can't be there for that, correct? October twenty two?
Right, I thought this was for November.
Okay, so well, you you said next meeting. So we did say.
It's up to you. I just can't be at the.
Then I would say for the, so regarding the information for that we're discussing with Federoff by the for him for him, the November meeting, not the next meeting. We are still having an October meeting for anything regular that might come up, but not relating anything. So Richard does not need to be there for the October meeting?
Okay.
So and not saying you can't correspond, in the meantime, but anything we're looking from him for the November meeting, because Marguerite can't be there. So I want to clearly, we're not saying the next meeting, because the next meeting is October, which we're still having.
But we're not scheduling Stonegate at the October.
Correct, correct.
And then I think the other two pieces were an update on the work that's being done in Lisa's yard. Or just as.
Right.
In that update and also making sure that any plans that you have, Jeff, that Weston Sampson may not have, and any other materials they might have access to or provided.
And then for the record, like regarding Lisa Paquette's property, again, I'll mention this again when we get to November. Any discussion that night regarding her property, I simply want to be, this is what we're doing. This is what we still need to do. This is what can't be done. I do not want any discussion on payment. I don't want any pointing fingers of, well, if this didn't happen. It's strictly input as to what has been done. Information only. I do not want any discussion. We can talk about it, but not any discussion on the who's, the whys, just what's been done, if anything.
Richard, anything you want to submit to the board, like the information on nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing should really be in by the October meeting so that I have time to look at it. I don't want it the day of the meeting. That doesn't happen. I need to get things that you plan on submitting to the board, like you have information on nine thirty nine Stonegate Landing. Please have it to the board for the October meeting. They won't discuss it at that meeting, but that will give me time to review it. Okay, I can't. I'm not going to be successful if you give it to me on November thirteenth or twelfth.
I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Can you make me a list? I mean, I don't hear you.
Yeah, I know. Carrie goes on. I I understand.
That's that's fine.
I'm trying to.
If you give me.
Josh, you're in too.
Jeff can hear.
It's okay. I really understand.
Richard, I can hear fine. I'd be the same way. I would want a bold list of what I need to do, too. I'm the same way. I get it.
Carrie and I will work together to make sure that this gets out.
I can be, yes. All right.
Do you want us copying Jeff on things that we sent to you?
What's that?
You want her to copy me? You want Marguerite to copy?
Don't pick on Carrie, especially when it was guy, you know?
I know.
Okay, all right, okay. But, yeah.
Copy Jeff on things that.
You know, I beat him. I said, yeah.
I know. I'm not suggesting that. It just avoids you having to forward it.
I gotta track him.
But no, now you don't have to. If he sees. We'll see. Yes. I'll I'll answer for him. Yes, we'll see. Yes. Oh, yeah, Carrie, I mean, Marguerite, Greg made a good point. Also, a- any updated information with Richard and Weston Sampson regarding on what exactly they meant for the pavement? What they did say, paving over is not recommended.
Read that whole paragraph.
So, yeah, therefore, paving over existing pavement is not recommended. However, we don't see anything in writing where they said the binder needs to be removed. We didn't see that either. So Richard knows that he needs to follow up with them and just clarify that. So we can add that to the list of things that of a list of things of information to have ready for us.
Yeah, whether it's a full removal or location.
Right, not necessarily looking for to discuss, you know.
With the with asphalt distress.
It's more just like, we just want to know how if for them to clarify on that, I guess. But then I think that should be it.
This is Carrie's, by the way.
All right, Marguerite, anything else for them before? I think that covers everything.
That was on the conversation list.
Yep.
For now, I think the modification list is still out there.
It's still a little farther down the road, I think, too, but. I think so, too, yeah. So, yeah, in terms of sidewalks, I think we can, no pun intended, table that for now. You know, it doesn't say there's not anything that's, you know, if we get more information about it, great, but it still would need to go on a on a full potential request for modification. So there's really no point of even talking more about it until we've determined that needs to happen. We can't keep talking about it in a public forum if it hasn't even been mentioned, you know, if we haven't formally requested for it, you know what I mean? Okay. All right, gentlemen, I think you are all set. Sounds good. Thank you.
Nice having you here.
Yeah, absolutely. I I've heard your name before. I was too young beforehand, but nice to be involved, but thank you. Carrie, any other correspondence?
No.
Sounds good. Bye, guys. Thank you. No problem. Public input. Obviously, you don't have any members of the public here regarding anything separate. I don't think we have anybody on Zoom regarding public input.
I wanted to go talk about something if you got a second.
Absolutely. Yep. So that's, yeah, so now public input. Now I'll turn it over to board members if they have anything they want to bring up.
Yeah, so last last meeting, I was bringing up that new law the governor signed in.
For the tiny homes or so.
Yeah, so it's actually the Affordable Housing Act. So I was doing some of my own research on.
Wait, sorry, can you just catch me up?
Last meeting I brought up in regards to the public for the adopting of the Affordable House Act. It was adopted by the time it's a state of Massachusetts on August sixteen.
Yep.
She was trying to look up.
Oh, right, right.
So it's better known as accessory dwelling units under section one A of chapter forty eight. But that's the the things, the reason why I'm bringing it up is that I'm not opposed to it. I'm not for it. I'm not opposed to it. What I am is I think, because it states that the house, the building could be up to nine hundred square feet, and then it says, or half of the gross size of the house, or which one is ever less.
Okay.
So the concerns I have is I don't know how it relieves us from our bylaws on certain things. So now we have a water monitor.
I just pulled up the accessory right right now.
We have a water monitor. So we also have, you know, what's the impacts on our schools? What's gonna be the impacts on our fire, our police, our roads? You know, Title V, is that gonna come into play with these? There's a lot of unforeseen things that nobody really knows. I don't know how to do this, but I was wondering if we should start set up a committee to start looking into this article. this article, whatever, this article, section one A of chapter forty eight, get some members, start looking into, do like a, an impact report, see what, what other towns are doing and get some ideas on this because this is going to come up to us.
I was just going to say, it's going to come before you. I was just going to say, it's going to, it's going to be the new solar, in, in the sense that it's going to be a new thing we're going to be facing.
Town of Dayton that we as members of this board are planning, wherever it might be going in front of, have some input, some understanding, some follow up. So I'm not sure if we should, I don't know who to talk to, as a selectman or whatever, we get a committee, we start looking into what other towns are doing, where our bylaws are going to be affected, where we have any grounds, is it going to be, I mean, because this is a lot.
Is this more of a pl- planning question?
So a lot of it went into effect and some of it takes effect immediately and some aspects of it may take effect in February.
Right.
Yes.
There are, you know, I think a lot, many communities, well, if not all communities, are trying to understand the impacts associated with this law. And what if any, you know, modifications to their zoning bylaw need to be made? Under chapter forty A, the planning board is the entity that writes our zoning bylaws.
We interpret it and we go from the, they, we, we don't write the, yeah.
And I think this is a conversation that really needs to be happening with planning.
That's why, that's why I said that, yeah.
And perhaps the zoning board may want to have a, may want to write a letter to the planning board to say that we're interested.
Or, or, or a joint meeting for discussion, I mean.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I just, I think if we develop the committee, get three, four people and they start doing an impact study on what it's done to other towns, where we stand.
So a couple, a couple of things on that. One.
Town is trying to figure this.
Forming, I, I don't know the exact details, but I know forming a new committee definitely requires, is there going to be a budget? Is there going to be a clerk involved? And like, that's obviously more of a.
Well, I'm not trying to go, no, but that, I want to stop you right there. That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
So what I'm saying is, is we get some members in the town, they, I'm not, there's no monies or anythings for these folks. They're going to be doing this. They're going to be volunteering. Well, at the end of the day, they can do a study, okay? So now if, how many houses in this, our town are going to be impacted on this? What's it going to do to our school system? We can get, come up with a study so our bylaws are going to have to be changed according to this.
So what this kind of reminds me of was years ago, Bob, Bob, it's when Bob was still chair, where, I don't know if you remember, but in the town hall basement, in the building that's now, the part of the town hall that's now the temporary library,
Yeah.
planning and zoning had a joint meeting regard, regarding solar. And that's when we were discussing like us relinquishing our, is it almost worth maybe having something along those lines again with them? And maybe involving the assessors, considering it's going to involve what number of properties? I, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it because it's going to help with revenue with the people. What I'm, what I'm nervous about is not understanding it and it comes in front of us, one as a board and two as an applicant. It's going to be a burden on them as well.
So I think that as this board, the only authority you have is to authorize Carrie. You could take a vote and maybe this is something to put out in discussion for your next meeting, is to take a vote to ask Carrie to send a letter to the planning board.
Yeah.
Indicating that you've been made aware of this law, that you are, you believe that it may require some changes to the zoning bylaw that as zoning board members, you'd be interested in learning more about the law.
Just a conversation to start, you know what I mean?
Would be interested in a joint meeting and perhaps getting, inviting.
The water department.
Planning Board Council to come and speak to both boards about their, what they understand the law to be, what changes, if any, need, might need to be made to our zoning bylaws, any other work that might need to be done.
Maybe assessors board, if it's going to be.
But it's not for you to say what other board. You only can speak on behalf of the zoning.
Oh, no, but is it, I, I mean, is it, is it worth us reaching out to them too, to have them involved?
So like.
Assessors board is not going to be able to give you any feedback.
Okay, okay, that's, I, I didn't.
They have to ask other boards to be involved.
The only, the, yeah, the only thing I'm concerned is, is an applicant comes in and they're going to think they get the world because this is what the law says and our bylaws mean nothing.
It's like forty B almost kind of thing.
It's a four, yeah, it's forty eight.
Where, like, we can come in now, we're exempted.
Right now, they will come to you. They will buy for a building.
Then they would have, then.
You won't see that.
So right, so right now, we're not, we're not involved at all.
I want one, the building inspector to know what, what's allowed and what's not allowed by us. Even now, we have some correspondence. We have some information on it. I want to, I think it's in the best interest of the town of Dayton to do, to set up a committee. I still agree meeting with the planning board. We're not the guys that are going to be doing this. But at the end of the day, when we have to re-change our bylaws to meet, to do whatever we want to call it, accessories, apartments, all it. There's all kinds of things. We like, all right, so we have a septic system. Some towns have sewer. We have septic systems. We're increasing bedroom. We're increasing volumes. Is that going to change your septic system? Are they going to have relief on the septic system? Those, I just kind of want to.
You're not wrong, Greg.
No, there's a lot of little things.
And I think that the best I could suggest is that if the planning board does agree to your request for a joint meeting and that you bring in planning board council to have that meeting.
Yeah.
That you have, you make that proposal to them.
I mean, I could.
Find out if that might be a possible, a possible option. I think you should hear from the building inspector as well.
I think I might want to do that right out of, yeah.
Because I don't know the way that this town works in terms of their development. You know, but I believe they have town develop, department head meetings.
Yeah, yes.
Based on development. And so those people may actually be the appropriate entity to take into, take this into consideration.
So we'll definitely, and I think it's great we're talking about it now, but I definitely agree that any, any reaching out to them should happen. So, so Carrie, if you can put that on the agenda, you can put that for October, obviously.
Yeah.
That we'll discuss the letter or discuss, discuss possibly cor, potential correspondence with the planning board. We're not going to, we're not going to say, we're not going to discuss the letter. We're going to discuss as a board, do we want to reach out and then we'll go from there. But yeah, if you want to put that on the agenda for October.
When this, when this forty A comes in front of the town of Dayton, they'd be going in front of the planning board. Am I correct on this or not the zoning board?
Not necessarily. It depends on how much, it depends on what you put into your bylaw and what is allowed and prohibited by this. So there's certain things that the town is going to have authority to, to establish bylaws for.
Well, I was reading.
And there's other things that are allowed by.
I was reading in here that they can approach wetlands. They can go right up against the property lines.
Right, so there's pieces that the town will be able to regulate and there's other pieces that the town will not. And that's the part that you need to have explained to you by, and I, and my recommendation is to use planning board council because planning board council is the ones who work with the planning board to propose.
To draft that.
Draft any sheet.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, in a, in a conversation that I was having with Veronica Truel over something that has nothing to do with any of the general discussion this evening, this came up in, by her and what she indicated to me was although it's not a forty B process, quote unquote,
Yeah.
that administration of the new forty A regulations and procedures ultimately may be overseen by DCHD and then passed through to the monitoring agents. Actually made reference to the monitoring system being given more money so that they would have, you know, people on the ground, if you will, who can come and educate the cities and towns as to what the procedures are going to be, regulations, rules, et cetera, things like that. What might make sense is hearing what Marguerite is suggesting is at least a motion to send a letter to planning board for a joint meeting, but at the same time, we may want to separately consider reaching out to Veronica or to DCHD and asking them also to provide us more information first. You know, we may want to invite them to a meeting to educate us first as to the directions this is going to go so that when we send a letter to planning, we, we, we know more about what we're talking about.
Again, my only concern here is that I think this is a little bit of an overreach on the part of the zoning board reviews.
I just think as a.
Your job as zoning board members is to.
Well, we're an official in the town of Dayton and we're supposed to pay attention to what goes on in the zone. As an official in the town of Dayton, who's been in this department for more than I don't even remember, as I'm reading all these bylaws, I want whenever an applicant comes in front of me to know what I need to be looking for. That's where I'm coming in. So that's why I'm bringing up, I, I don't know if zoning you, you feel is overstepping.
No, no, I think, I think she's saying.
What I'm saying is that.
Planning makes sense. Planning makes sense.
I got that. I got that.
Yeah, I think that that's really, that type of education needs to be to the planning board.
Yes.
Not to the zoning board. But the zoning board as the entity that implements a zoning bylaw certainly has a reason to ask to have a joint meeting with the planning board and have whoever the planning board wants to invite to provide.
That's.
That information.
That'd be up to them.
Um, there and present to discuss and answer any questions that you have. You have a lot of questions about this law.
There's more. That's the word, questions. I don't know who's going to get the answers.
They're trying to find out, you know, you have, you want to know what if any steps the town should be taking, what if any steps the zoning board should be taking and, and also the timing and the implementation of it and what can be regulated and what can't be. It's, the laws, as I've been reading it, is pretty specific on, on the town having very limited regulatory control in this area. But I'm not going to presume to try to give you advice on this law because it's not.
Too new.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't fully invest on it.
Mr. Chairman, I provide Carrie with the contact information to reach out and then if Carrie would like, he could provide that information to the planning board and perhaps the planning board could invite us to attend a joint meeting with a presentation.
I mean, we can talk about, I, I have no problem talking about that now, but I think because it needs regarding a, a, a motion for it, we can, we're going to, we'll wait until next month to talk about it more because then it will at least be officially on the agenda for a vote. I mean, I, I can see the stipulation and brainstorming, that, that's fine, but in terms of what needs to happen next, I would say we can't, we cannot talk about it because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I just want, I just think.
No, I'm glad you brought up the public input. I'm glad you brought it up, but.
Because if we have to rewrite the bylaws to, to adopt this on certain circumstances, it, it's going to happen whether we like it or not.
No, I know.
Forty B, but I want, so when the applicant comes in front of us, one, if they go see Jim Agia, well, you need requirements of this, this and this.
You don't want them to walk in and be like, I haven't talked about.
Be one of the towns that's proactive on it, be ahead of it.
Don't say.
That's why I was saying.
I agree.
If it's not a committee, if we do have a joint meeting with the planning board, it's probably an awesome idea. Discuss, they're sure they have questions and concerns too. We can all put it on paper and then.
And by then, by then, I'm not saying that they should, but by then they may have more information by then.
You never know. You know, I.
I think that there's a lot of, a lot of outreach in being done to try to understand more what, what is that height.
No, I commend you for being proactive about it because it's very good.
It's just something I, in five years, this is going to be all on us.
That's, that's why the whole thing with solar came into my mind because we had, we did the same exact thing. We did the same thing. We met with them and we talked about that. So, so we'll.
I mean, I think that it may be, it may be involved in the town. I'm not sure that this is going to be something that will be coming before the zoning.
For, for all we know after that meeting, we, we, we might walk away thinking that, okay, we don't worry about this at all. But because you're right, we don't know, so let's find a way to get those answers. And the way to do that is to request a meeting, but like I said, we'll talk about that.
Planning like we talked about, we'll put whatever we got to do and then if planning wants to deal with what Jonathan's talking about, we get the more people, again, committee, more people that we can get involved to understand what this is actually going to be. It's a new law. And when you read one article, you open up another page, there's another.
Yeah, at least a rabbit hole. I know, at least a rabbit hole. Yeah, so. But we'll have the on the agenda for next meeting to make an official vote on, on the request.
Because I'm not opposed to it.
It will be specific that.
I just want more information on it.
Yep.
So it's a fair request. It's, it's definitely an area that it makes sense to be able to ask questions and get some input and make sure that you're doing it in a way that is, you know, honoring the entities that have that authority.
Yeah, like I say, and, and I, I wanted if the applicant should come in, Jim would have, okay, if you're going to plan on doing this, this is what you need to have. One less thing the applicant would have to deal with later. They would be able to add it to his building permit for that type of permit.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will simply be happy to get more information so that we can attach it to the agenda item for next meeting.
Okay. All right.
I've got pages, but.
Next, next thing is to approve the meeting minutes for August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of, of the twenty seventh of last month.
There are second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, John's on Zoom. John's on Zoom, so we need roll call.
Aye, Greg Wogan.
Hi, Zachary Karen.
Hi, Susan Richard.
Hi, Lisa Spencer.
Hi, Jonathan Gale.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Someone's going to do it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, roll call vote.
Greg Wogan.
Susan Richard.
Zachary Karen.
Ali Spencer.
Jonathan Gale, aye.
All aye. All right, all set.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. See you next month.